I'd like to call order the West Covina Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 8th at 7:04 PM. We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of style, prayer and meditation.
If you'll all stand, face the flag, and say with me, "Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vias. Commissioner Menefee.
Present.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Present.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Present.
Chairman Holt.
Present. Any changes or additions to the minutes of March 25th, 2014?
No.
Commissioner Menefee.
On page, let me do this. Under non-hearing items, number two, on the second page, in the paragraph starting, there was a short discussion. It says, "Menefee also suggested the city match the funds already raised for the memorial." And what I hope I said was, "I suggested the city match the funds to be raised up to a certain amount of money." Now, that didn't get passed with that in it, but I would like the ministry to reflect that correctly, if may. And also, under item three, at the start of page three, I'd like for that second paragraph to say that Commissioner Menefee asked that the COE RI addressed the problem of changing speed bumps to speed humps. And they acknowledged that at our meeting, but it didn't get reflected in the minutes. And that's it, sir.
We have those changes?
Yes. You can make a motion to adopt with the changes.
I'm sorry?
You can make a motion to adopt the minutes with the changes reflected.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes with the following changes offered by Commissioner Menefee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four oh. Bring us to oral communications. Does anybody wish to speak on oral communications? Mr. Stewart? Well, then, I'm not going to read the paragraph about oral communications. How about that? Public hearings, none. Non-hearing items, study session, code amendment number 14-03, medical marijuana dispensaries. Can we have a staff report, please? Are we going to have a staff report?
Yes, we do have a staff report, and I will be presenting that staff report. On March 18th, 2014, the City Council initiated a code amendment to study the medical marijuana dispensaries. The purpose of the study session is to introduce the planning commission to the issues of concern and the process to consider in doing the amendment. The city currently prohibits this type of use, and the way that the city has been prohibiting this type of dispensing marijuana, medical marijuana dispensaries, is by interpretation of the first section of the business license regulations that basically states that the purpose of this article is to license for revenue and/or regulation to carry on in the city of various lawful businesses, professions, trades, calls and/or occupations. Based on that section of the municipal code, the city doesn't allow the medical marijuana dispensaries, as they are lawful business per federal law. Federal law, except for very limited and authorized research purposes, federal law through the Controlled Substances Act absolutely prohibits the use of marijuana for any legal purpose and classifies it as banned Schedule I drug. It cannot be legally prescribed as medicine by a physician, and the federal regulation supersedes any state regulation, so that, under federal law, California medical marijuana statutes do not provide a legal defense for the cultivation or possessing marijuana. Therefore, the city municipal code does not contain regulation governing the establishment, location, and operation of this type of uses. If you recall, back in 1996, I'm sorry, California voters approved the use, and under Proposition 215, which was entitled "The Compassionate Use of 1996," Compassionate Use Act, I'm sorry, of 1996. The intent of the Proposition 215 was to enable persons in need of medical marijuana for specified medical purposes to obtain and use it under limited and specified circumstances. Later, the California Legislature adopted Senate Bill 420, effective January 2004, adding the medical marijuana program. The program created a state-approved medical marijuana identification card program and provided certain additional immunities from state marijuana laws. However, these propositions did not address how the provisions should be implemented, particularly in regard to the distribution of medical marijuana through facilities commonly referred to as medical marijuana dispensaries. As such, some California cities that initially authorized dispensaries later experienced significant detrimental secondary impacts associated with them and their proliferation. As you know, I think LA has been reducing the number and adopted different changes to their ordinance that they had originally approved. As such, Senator Correa introduced Senate Bill 1262 in the state legislature on February 21st, 2014, which is being sponsored by the California Police Chiefs Association and the League of California Cities, which seeks to clarify the rules and regulations concerning medical marijuana and require the California Department of Public Health to license and regulate dispensaries that have been allowed by a local jurisdiction. So, based on that discussion at the meeting of March 18th, 2014, the City Council directed staff to prepare a code amendment. The proposed code amendment will have two parts, as provided in the staff report. One will be prohibit the medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of West Covina, and the second is to prepare a code amendment to provide standards and restrictions for this use in the case that federal government passes legislation requiring cities to allow medical marijuana dispensaries. As you know, that there is evidence by other cities that demonstrates the need for careful regulation. Cities that have permitted establishments of medical marijuana have experienced an increase in crimes such as burglary, robbery, assaults, the distribution of tainted marijuana, the sale of illegal drugs in the areas immediately surrounding the dispensaries, the unavoidable exposure of school-aged children and other sensitive residents to this type of use and the diversion of marijuana for non-medical and recreational uses. Therefore, this study session is just to introduce the planning commission to the issues and current code standards, and the second study session tentatively will be scheduled for May 27th. And the intent of the next study session will be to provide the planning commission options, and then, obviously, we will have a public hearings and public input as well. So, this concludes my staff report, and I'll be more than happy to hear any thoughts.
Any questions, the staff? Commissioner Menefee?
I have no question. I guess I'm going to lead up the question. First of all, I understand from reading this and from other sources, the federal law prohibits cultivating, distributing, and dispensing marijuana, period. I don't understand why we need to go much further. I noticed the City Council, in all their wisdom, has asked staff to write two proposals. One is to prohibit medical marijuana, and the other one is to do something just in case the federal government passes legislation. How in the heck are you, as a staff, going to write something in anticipation of the federal law doing something that you don't know what they're going to do about?
That is a good question. It is a little bit unclear what the direction it is in terms of, first of all, we don't know whether cities are going to be required to even allow it. This is not a First Amendment issue, such as maybe adult-oriented business, tattoo, you know, having a tattoo parlor. So, we don't know, even if they, if local jurisdictions will allow it, I'm not sure that the right of prohibiting is going to be taken away from local government. So, I understand your concern, because I have the same concern. I'm not sure what is going to come out of this bill that was introduced in the legislature.
I hate to see our staff, or any staff, have to spend a lot of time trying to anticipate what those guys back in Washington are going to decide someday to do. But I certainly support the prohibition, and I want that to be very quick. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, the staff? Commissioner Blackburn?
I have a question. What cities in the San Gabriel Valley now allow medical marijuana dispensaries? Are you familiar with?
No, actually, I don't know what cities within the San Gabriel Valley allows those uses. We haven't done any research. I know that cities, like I said, the city of LA do allow them, and there were other cities, like Santa Barbara, they were one of the first cities to allow it, Santa Cruz, but none in the San Gabriel Valley that I'm aware of. And definitely, West Covina hasn't experienced a problem. There have been a lot of inquiries, but as I said, you know, we, because the conflict between state law and federal law, and federal law supersedes state law, the city does not allow them.
Thank you.
And to remind us all that all of our banks are federally chartered, and so they have to follow the federal law, as Colorado certainly found out recently.
However, I believe that President Obama actually adopted some different, some regulations to allow bank to accept some of those deposits, and I don't know all the, obviously, all the particulars or criteria, but there has been some changes from the administration.
And have been just recently?
Yes, it's been within the past couple of months.
Mr. Castellanos?
The only thing I'd add, I'm going to go through a brief PowerPoint presentation that I didn't attend, but I did print the slides. It'll provide some insight as to what happened in the city of Riverside when they did allow them. So, I'll go through that briefly when I'm going through my oral presentation.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, I think Commissioner Menefee provided his thoughts. At this point, we, obviously, this is something that was initiated by a city council. We will be preparing a code amendment to prohibit this type of use, and I would assume that we will continue if the direction continues to be that we prepare another code amendment in case that we have to allow it. Then, at that point, we also will come back with a code amendment that indicates that, some kind of criteria.
Yeah, because they requested it, you need to go forward with it. I mean, we can't turn it down.
Correct, yes.
And then, I'll come back into May, May meeting?
Correct. We will do research, such as what other cities allow them, what kind of problems they have experienced, whether they're backing away from allowing them, whether they're limiting, what it's, you know, did there have to be a certain distance from schools, playground, I mean, what kind of criteria or requirements they have. So, we will do a lot more research at that point and bring it forward.
But now, these are planning department, planning commission.
Yes, this will be at a planning commission level. All code amendments will come to you first for your recommendation, and once we do the research, you can recommend to City Council not to adopt a code amendment, or, you know, to adopt just a portion of it, or, you know, there's different ways that you will be forwarding your recommendation to them.
So, we would deal with the physical structure of however you're going to
Yeah, we'll do research.
Raise, cultivate, and distribute marijuana.
Well, we will have to do, yes, and I don't know the details, because I haven't done the research, but definitely, that will be something that we will look into, and obviously, you know, we will set those parameters, come back with options, just like we always do. And if at the end of going through the whole, all the study sessions, we prepare a code amendment and a resolution, and the planning commission decides not to recommend approval, that is, that is your role, I mean, that's what
Well, it won't be any different than any other thing.
Correct, yes.
You put it together, and we either approve, disapprove, or
Correct.
Make additions, and then, once we do that, it goes to council.
Correct.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but we're talking about a substance, a thing, a product. We don't often talk about products. We talk about physical characteristics of stores and parking and things of that nature. I'm a little confused as to how we address the product of marijuana in relationship to what we do as a planning commissioner.
Well, it wouldn't be much different than the, what do you call it, the e-cigarettes and all that? That's a product, and we looked at that.
That's a good point. Why'd we do that?
I'm sorry. You know, what you will be considering is basically the use, the location, what will be the conditions or the requirements for, to allow such uses that you can consider. Also, too, in some of the things that you are mentioning, we probably will work together also with our local police department. I mean, they probably have more knowledge on some of the detrimental issues that come about with the uses.
I would also hope if the federal government does require, at any point in the future, cities to allow them, we would hope that they provide the guidance as to, you know, regulation, growing, and cleanliness, and everything else that goes along with it. But we'll see, we'll see what they pass down.
Anything else on that subject, for staff? No? Okay. Do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you.
Takes us to continuation of oral communications. Do you wish to speak again? Okay. All right. Commission reports, comments, miscellaneous items. This is a time when any member of the commission may bring a matter to the attention of the full commission that is within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for discussion in this section of the agenda. No commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If the commission desires to discuss an issue raised by a speaker or take an action, the commission may vote to agendize the matter for a future meeting. Okay, brings us to number three, AB 1234 Conference and Meeting Report, and I think Commissioner Castellanos is going to make a presentation to us?
Yeah.
All right. The floor is yours.
All right. I'm trying not to put you all to sleep. My trip to San Francisco on Wednesday, March 26th through Friday, March 28th was really enjoyable, a little bit exhausting, but hopefully, we could, I could share some of what I learned. The first meeting I attended on Wednesday morning at 10:00 in the morning was regards to ethics, AB 1234, that we have to comply with every two years. Read a few bullet points here. Introduction notes here that says, "The following are not statements of law, but rather principles the law is designed to achieve. The goal in providing this list is to identify the kinds of issues addressed by public service ethics laws. If an issue arises under these principles, public officials should consult agency counsel." The first one is about personal financial gain laws. Generally speaking, California law says public officials, well, basically can't have personal financial gains due to their position. Another topic that came up that was a hot-button issue was perks. Anything that, here, let me see my notes on perks. Can't receive compensation for speaking, writing, or attending a conference, tickets to sporting events, cash. What else here? Trading votes is illegal. What else? Another bullet point was transparency laws. That's why we fill out the statement of financial interests. We have to disclose economic interests. Let's see, what else is important here? One, the speaker, one of the topics he spoke about, or bullet points, was ethics has six universal values: trustworthiness, honesty, loyalty, responsibility. Well, trustworthiness and honesty were the same thing. Responsibility, respect, fairness, and compassion. So, basically, okay, back to the perks. Other things that are considered gifts are meals, food, drinks, including receptions, entertainment, like concerts and sporting events, certain kinds of travel and lodging. One exception that they mentioned as far as gifts, as far as lodging goes, is if you've had a friend, and they actually refer to it as a best friend forever, BFF in the law, that's the one exception you could have for accepting gift of lodging. Otherwise, you can't do it. Another exception to gifts is birthdays and holidays, when gifts are normally exchanged. And, let's see here, you can be compensated for travel for speeches, but not for the speech itself. Let's see here. Well, I think we're all pretty familiar with ethics, so I'll move on to the next.
I think some of our congressmen should have gone to that.
Yeah, actually, the speaker was pretty good. He was kind of funny. He said, "House of Cards," I haven't watched that, but I think that's a Netflix original series. He said it's pretty dead-on to what actually goes on, so I'll have to check that out. Oh, another thing they mentioned is no on-the-side consulting business. That's not okay. Let's see here. Another important point they touched on is mass mailings. If mass mailings are paid for by the city, you can't have an elected official be featured on the mass mailing. So, that seemed to be pretty important for them to mention. And if that does happen, the penalties are two times or three times the cost of the mailing. Not a huge cost, but slap on the wrist, I guess. Okay, anyway, the next, so that was from 10:00 to 12:00. The next one was at 1:00. And that was titled, "Planning Commissioner's Roles and Responsibilities in How to Run a Meeting." Let's see here. Well, I think I'll pass these around, because there, it's a lot of bullet points, but some important things that were mentioned, bullet points here, is no one follow the Brown Act to be effective. Come prepared, meaning read all materials, do site visits of properties, do justice to the process. A commissioner with a minority opinion has an obligation to articulate why he or she disagrees with the majority. Another important thing they mentioned was maintain a good planning commissioner and staff relationship. That's obviously very important. The next meeting was at 2:45. That was Essentials of Planning. We talked about, a lot of that talked about the general plan, and also, what else did they talk about here? The update to the housing element. So, a lot of that was very familiar to me from when we had our meetings here. Actually, I saw the company who we hired as a city to help us with that, they had a representative there, and so, she mentioned, the name of the lady, it sounded familiar, so, yeah, they were there. So, that was, that was pretty much review. The update to the housing element, a few months ago? What else is relevant here? Skip that one. Oh, I know. Let me grab the relevant marijuana dispensary slides. Those were about the city of Riverside. I didn't attend that one, because it coincided with Essential Planning Tools 102, but I'll go through it pretty quickly. Riverside, one incident they had was a guard shot a driver outside a dispensary. Part of the presentation, I did talk to some people about it afterwards. The main takeaway was that the dispensaries in Riverside brought a lot of crime, unwanted crime, and other drugs. Some business owners then got creative and had mobile dispensaries, selling out of vans, and as you
That's how it all started, wasn't it?
I don't know if it started that way. But that came with more problems. The vans were held up, well, I mean, they're full of drugs and money, so they're a target for other people looking to make fast money. So, that was, the main takeaway was, it came with a lot of problems, and if it could be avoided, that's probably a good thing. Let's see, what else we have here? One of the presentations dealt with planning in San Diego, and the main theme or idea there was that, as the population grew to be more and more dense, they got creative with public transportation, bicycle lanes, buses, streetlights, and that seems to be working, so I think the idea, the main message was, if you're having problems with density, look at San Diego, and I've got this presentation that you can look at if interested. Let's see, what else here? Well, Thursday, the majority of Thursday dealt with SEQA, which, as we've discussed in here, the top five concepts are disclosure, good faith effort, consider the public comments, mitigation, and fair argument. Let's see, what else have we got here? And in regards to fair argument, that slide states that an EIR is required when it can be fairly argued on the basis of substantial evidence in the administrative record that a project may have a significant effect on the environment. Let's see here. And then, it goes on to talk about what is substantial evidence. They gave a case study, so I could pass these around, too, because there's a lot of slides. And I have three full presentations on SEQA, so check those out. And I have three full presentations on CEQA, so check those out.
Mr. Castellanos, would it be possible that you could provide some of the more meaningful things that you observed, the handouts, to staff, and maybe they could make copies for the other commissioners? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I could do that. I'll convince these to the most meaningful slides.
Okay, thank you.
Because there's just too many slides.
Great. I'm sorry, I was going to say, if you want us to make copies, we can actually scan those and email to each of you guys.
There's a lot, there's a lot to scan.
Just as an option.
These are all on, I could forward you the website that Lydia sent to me. That's where I printed all these. But I could pick the best ones, because it's a lot of slides, if that would be easier.
Yeah, I would recommend you go through those and just pick out the key ones, because they've got enough work to do, and it's hard for them not being there, knowing which ones are the key ones to forward, so that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I'll pick the best ones from the CEQA presentations. After the CEQA presentations, there was one session that was just open questions that a lot of, a lot of the topics that seemed like many cities struggle with was just dealing with a difficult audience, really. And I think based on what they suggested, we already do a pretty good job of managing difficult audience by being respectful. I heard some pretty interesting stories about people being cut off and not given a proper opportunity to speak their mind. But overall, I think, from what I heard, we do a good job of giving people an opportunity and keeping everything moving along. And, well, one presentation I listened to at the very end, it was called, well, the title is "The Future of Transportation." This is guy Tony Seba, he has an MBA from Harvard, I think it was, and computer science degree from MIT, no, MBA from Stanford, sorry. The main topic of his presentation, and the reason it was relevant, is he thinks electric vehicles are basically going to take over by 2017, maybe 2020 at the latest. And the reason that's relevant is he seems to think that we won't have to deal with parking as much. There'll be companies like Zipcar that rent cars on demand for you, you know, they'll just show up. Apparently, that's already working in San Francisco. He touched on a lot of topics, like battery, R&amp;D, how Tesla's building
Put home batteries?
Yeah, I can't remember how many billions he said they're investing in their battery factory, but it was significant, he showed a picture. Overall takeaway was, electric cars are highly likely to just change the way we all operate and reduce traffic impacts and parking. And, yeah, other than that, I think, I'll condense the slides and email the most relevant ones, because, yeah, there were a lot. Any questions?
Yeah, in that same vein, were there discussions about the impact on planning commissions? For instance, you talked about electric cars. Electric cars need charging. And so as we're designing things and approving things, we need to pay attention to things like additional places for people to charge electric cars, because you don't see many of them around today, but they will be needed more as we progress.
They didn't, he didn't touch on that, but that will be very relevant. One of the companies that was there, I requested a book, it was kind of like an introduction to the company. I haven't received it yet, but I'll bring that in once I receive it. They had a map of existing charging stations and planned stations in the future. So once I get that, I'll bring that in.
AeroVironment up here in Monrovia that makes drones also has a whole division that does the fabrication and installation and the monitoring of electrical stations, and they have most of Oregon and Washington, and they probably have 30 or 40 in California so far, sprinkled along the freeway. So there are a lot of people involved in it right now. Yeah, it's good for us to become more familiar with those things.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Castellanos. Yeah, if you could summarize that. I know it's difficult, there's a lot of information when we want, you digest verbally, but you don't write it down, because it's kind of hard to do. But if we can get some key points, and staff maybe can send it out to us. Anyone else? Comments? Mr. Blackburn?
I think we received notification from the planning department regarding a June 22nd, 20 and 22nd invitation in Ontario at Embassy Suites.
Oh, yeah.
It was going to be for the, not exclusively for Latinos, but basically, it was going to be a Latino elected officials training academy. I think it was going to be sponsored by Chrysler Corporation, if I'm not mistaken. I just wondered if any of my fellow commissioners had, was it email? I think
Yeah, Jeff and I talked about it a little bit. Supposedly, it's going to be paid for.
By Chrysler.
I'm not sure by who. It would be no cost to us.
The dates?
And he was going to get us some more information as to the particulars on that. And evidently, he doesn't have it yet, but he will get it to us.
Came from Lydia.
Yeah.
I missed that. The dates?
Date was the 20 through the 22nd, Friday through Sunday in June.
In Ontario.
In Ontario, at the Embassy Suites. And basically, everything was paid for unless you want to have your own room. I don't think, being this close, if we were to attend, that it would be wise just to drive out and drive back.
Sure.
So, hopefully, we'll get some more information on that.
Yeah, Jeff's going to work on it. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, planning directors report, please.
None?
None?
None. Sorry.
City council action? None.
None. That's right.
Okay. If there's nothing else, it brings us to a German, unless somebody else has something. Do you have anything, Gerald? Anyone else?
Mr. L.
Okay, we're adjourned.